Evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are calling the meeting to order. I am Chair Mary Rena O'Meara. This is the April 25th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Portland. I'll provide a quick overview of tonight's agenda, and then I will go through the Commissioner role. So for this evening, we have deliberations and recommendations for the Parking Compliance Amendments Project, followed by briefing about the garbage and recycling rates, and then further training from BPS staff from the Comprehensive Plan. So for the Commissioners present, myself as Chair, we have Commissioner Lang, Vice Chair Pounceel, Vice Chair Thompson attending in person, and for Commissioners attending remotely, we have Commissioner Alexander, Commissioner Spivak, Commissioner Patel, and we do have quorum for tonight's meeting. So with that, I believe our next item is for me to ask if there are any items of interest from Commissioners. Please just indicate by raising your hand. Yes, Commissioner Thompson, Vice Chair, I should say, Thompson.
Hi, everyone. I can't see the folks on Zoom, but I trust that you are all out there somewhere. I wanted to quickly share an update on the Inclusionary Housing Work Group that I've been participating in probably since about November or October of 2022. So it's been a few months. We initially intended for the work group to wrap up, I think, this month, but the process has been extended in order to allow that group to consider more possible variables and program changes to the Inclusionary Housing Program. The group was convened by the Portland Housing Bureau and consists mostly of developers, both affordable, nonprofit, and private developers. And the initial scope or topics that were on the table for recalibration were fairly limited going into the process, and we're looking at things like extending the tax exemption for the whole building outside of the Central City Plan District, looking at reconfiguration options and off-site options, but not a whole lot else. And so part of the extended effort now has been to talk to the work group members about other potential aspects of the program that they feel should be considered for potential changes. And so that is our next meeting. I think this Friday will be to look at the results of that survey effort and see what our direction is going forward. And I believe that the timeframe at this point is to wrap up in June or July this summer. But if anybody has specific interest in that topic or wants to hear more, I'm happy to share.
Thank you for that update and for your representation on that committee, Vice Chair Thompson. Our next item is the Director's Report. Patricia, are there any items for reporting?
Good evening, Commissioners. Patricia Deefendorfer for the record with Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I don't have any updates to provide in a Director's Report this evening.
Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept? And the only item are the minutes from the April 11th Commission Meeting.
I still move.
Okay, Commissioner Alexander, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lang, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Great. So next up, we have the Parking Compliance Amendments Project. I'm going to call up staff Sandra Wood and JP McNeil. Before they provide the overview, are there any conflicts of interest for Commissioners to report on this item? Okay, seeing none indicated. Welcome, Sandra and JP.
Right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm JP McNeil with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. And just bear with me one moment while I pull up this presentation. So let's see, get out of this way.
And I believe Sandra and JP will be introducing an amendment as well as part of your presentation.
Yes, we will. All right. Okay, so we are here tonight to talk about the Parking Compliance Amendments Project. This is a project that is a zoning code project to bring our zoning code into compliance with the state's climate-friendly and equitable communities rules. As you most, I'm sure you recall, I was here to give a briefing back in late March, and two weeks ago, you held a hearing on this project here. And as a quick reminder, the proposals that were included in the proposed draft are to amend the code, to remove minimum parking requirements citywide, to update and simplify maximum parking requirements, and to add new development standards for large parking lots. And as was just mentioned, there is an amendment being proposed to the proposed draft, and that is to a standard for elderly and disabled housing for bicycle parking. And so the amendment is to, it will close a loophole for lower bike parking allowances for elderly and disabled housing. And so what that entails, there's essentially, there is a chapter, the elderly and disabled housing chapter, and in that chapter, there are some incentives for elderly and disabled housing, such as increased density or the bike parking allowances. And in 2019, there is a bike parking project that moved the allowances for lowered bike parking to the parking chapter, where there's a section on bicycle parking. And so the bicycle parking in 229, the lowered amount, was intended to recognize that there's less demand for bicycle parking for elderly and disabled residents. And it's also tied to a covenant that for elderly and disabled housing, that developers have to submit, that says that they'll meet certain design features and requirements and restrict the, or ensure that the housing is for elderly and disabled residents. And so by moving the standard out of that chapter, it separated the requirement, the covenant requirement, from the parking allowances. And so by moving that, the bicycle parking standard from the parking chapter back to the elderly and disabled housing chapter, it will make that enforceable again. So that's the rationale for the proposal. And I believe that Commissioner Thompson will be making the amendment, but before we pass it along to her, I'm going to pass it to Sandra Wood to just give a quick training opportunity.
Thanks, JP. Good afternoon, Sandra Wood with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. As you know, we're trying to provide some orientation and onboarding for all of our new Commissioners. So I'm doing a little sideshow here. This is going to be the first vote that the Planning Commission takes as a body. So I wanted to share just a refresher. I know many of you have participated in boards and committees before, but just what the steps are to making a motion. And making a motion is basically how the Commission goes about voting or changing a proposal. So on the screen are six steps. The first is that a member raises their hands, is recognized by the presiding officer, in this case Commissioner O'Mara, and makes a motion usually. I move to XYZ. The second step is for another member to second the motion. And that's not just a formality. The second has a real purpose. And the purpose is for, to ensure that there's at least two members of the body that are interested in discussing the motion. If there isn't a second, that means the motion dies, and then the body doesn't spend time discussing things that they don't want to discuss as a body. So that's the purpose of the second. In our group, in the Planning Commission, is generally very, very friendly. And another thing about this seconding a motion doesn't mean you have to agree with what the motion is. You just agree that it's a good thing for the body to be discussing. So if somebody proposes an amendment and you're like, I'm not really even sure if I agree with that, it's okay. You can just second a motion and saying, let's all discuss it. So that's what the second means. The third is that the presiding officer restates the motion to the full Commission. This is generally done if the motion is unclear. Sometimes that step is a little bit skipped in reality. And then the members start debating the motion and asking questions, why would we do this amendment? Why would we approve this, et cetera? The fifth step is for the presiding officer to kind of, at the end of that debate, say, sounds like we've all talked about this. All our questions are answered. Okay, Julie, can you call the roll? And then the roll is called on that motion. And then sixth, the presiding officer announces the results of the voting and announces the next item of business. So for this project, we have a proposed draft before you. We've worked with Commissioner Thompson to propose an amendment. So you'll be doing a motion, a second, a vote on the amendment, and then we'll do the same process, a motion, a second, and vote on the full packet. And we have two slides to walk you through that. So this is about the amendment itself. So I'll invite Commissioner Thompson to speak to that.
Thanks, Sandra. Yeah, so I am in support of amending the proposed draft, as shown in the staff memo dated April 17, 2023. Since we're touching the chapter, I think that cleaning up loopholes or areas for ambiguity and confusion is a worthwhile effort. So I'm in support of that. I am also aware of BDS's recent survey of impediments to development in Portland, and bike parking is seen as one of those. So I'm sensitive to this issue. But again, I think that to the extent that changes to the bike parking code are made, that that should happen according to the public process. And we had a similar process that got us to the current bike parking policy, and it's just a error in the code or something that needs cleaned up. So I think we should clean that up. And then to the extent that future changes are warranted to bike parking, that should go through its proper process.
Do we have a motion for the amendment?
Make a motion.
Okay, Vice Chair Thompson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Spivak? To restate, this motion is to amend the proposed draft, as shown in the staff memo dated April 17, 2023, and we can move to discussion. Are there any items of discussion for this motion? Okay. I'm seeing none in person. Vice Chair? Okay, Vice Chair Pounceel, please. Did your mic, your mic? Where's your memo?
I'm sorry. I just need to be explained it to me again.
Do you want me to do that, or do you? In layperson's terms, the way I understand it is that there's the elderly and disabled code chapter, and when you follow that chapter, you're bound by certain covenants. You have to prove, you have to meet that you are in fact providing housing for elderly and disabled folks. The way that this bike parking requirement was brought into the parking chapter, it's not tied back to all of those covenant requirements. So the elderly and disabled piece in the parking and bike parking table is loosey-goosey. Is that accurate?
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would this mean that there would not be any bike parking at elderly or disabled housing?
No. So basically, if the regular rules were followed, the ratio for how many bike parking spaces to how many dwelling units is significant. It's like 1.1 to, 1.1 bike parking spaces to every dwelling unit. But for elderly and disabled housing, that ratio is reduced significantly to one bike parking space for every, I think, eight units, basically, because the demand for bike parking is a lot less for elderly and disabled residents. So in order to take advantage of that reduction in the number of bike parking spaces that's allowed, we don't have any mechanism to ensure that the developer will indeed be renting or that those units will be occupied by elderly or disabled households. And so we need to put the standard back into the chapter that requires the covenant that ensures an implementation mechanism and that the residents will be indeed elderly or disabled.
And just to add a little bit, before the bike parking project in 2019, this standard was in the elderly and disabled chapter. It just got moved in 2019. And so it's one of, and it's also one of the incentives that, for elderly and disabled housing. So it's, that was why, the intent of it was to be offered at a lower rate as an incentive to develop elderly and disabled housing. And so there's no connection any longer until it gets moved back.
Okay, and I see Commissioner Patel, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do. And I think, I had a clarifying question. I think it was just answered. You can hear me?
A little bit.
Just barely. We can't hear you very well.
And so Commissioner Thompson mentioned the recent survey. My question was surrounding that. And I remember the city asked the development community which building requirements that the city should consider changing to help increase, or help support, increase housing production. And bicycle requirements were referenced the most in the survey results. And so my question was, basically, just to clarify, that the purpose of the amendment is to tighten up code language to eliminate a loophole that was not originally intended to exist, as opposed to adding additional bicycle regulations that could impede housing production? Is that, is my understanding correct?
I'll just jump in really quickly to say, sorry, Patricia Deefendorfer, Chief Planner, BPS. So the development survey that you're talking about raises issues about parking more broadly. That is not what we're dealing here. And I think that's what Commissioner or Vice Chair Thompson was alluding to, is that this is not trying to address or solve what might be that larger bike parking consideration. This is merely to address, as you noted, just this loophole that sort of disassociated the reduction in bike parking for housing that serves elderly and disabled from the covenant agreement that ensures that that is in fact who's going to occupy the units. Does that make sense? So we're just trying to tie those back together so that people don't take advantage of a reduction and then don't, and then ultimately, that housing is not ultimately serving disabled and elderly. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, that absolutely does. Thanks for that clarification. Because that survey did broadly note bicycle requirements, but I couldn't find any further details on that. So thank you.
This is Chair O'Meara for the record. So on the covenant, what is, the duration of that is as long as the structure is in place, essentially. If the deed changed ownership, right, that next owner would still, that covenant would be passed down. So they would essentially have to go to the city if they wanted to exercise a modification to that covenant. But that is the intent, right, that the covenant would stay with the land.
Yeah, we call it runs with the land. There's several incentives, additional density, a little height. But then the dwelling units themselves have to have grab bars, wider doors, et cetera, to accommodate those residents. Yeah.
Commissioner Lang?
I thought I had a grasp on it. Just quick. Would a change of use then change that for parking requirements for bicycles? If it wasn't a facility for elderly or disabled, it was changed over to, say, just residential or affordable, would then you have to put back additional to meet current code?
Yes, yes. I mean, so there would be, but they would also be non-conformity. They got additional density of more units and all of these other incentives.
Just lumped in with all the.
Yeah, it depends on what incentives they took. I don't think we've ever gotten one of, and their disabled housing development who has moved out of that program. I think once they're built, it's usually, you know, a affordable housing provider that is managing those units. And as you will hear later today, when Tom is here and his team, we have more demand for those type of units as the years go by. So we haven't encountered that yet.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions or discussion from Commissioners? Okay, Julie, I think we're ready to take the roll.
Okay, excellent. So a reminder, this is just on this amendment. Alexander?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Pounceel?
Aye.
Spivak?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
O'Meara?
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay. And so then, the next slide here is for the motion for the entire package.
So this is, yeah, so we need another motion from someone and another second.
Do we have a motion for approval of the entire package?
I'll make a motion to approve the entire package.
Okay, Commissioner Spivak, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chair Thompson? Discussion? Ready? Okay. Okay, well, I know we had lengthy discussion at our last commission in concert with the public testimony. So it looks like we are ready to proceed to the roll.
Great. Alexander?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Pounceel?
Aye.
Spivak?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
O'Meara?
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up on our agenda are the garbage and recycling rates. And we have staff Evan Polk and Quinton Bauer here with us tonight to present this briefing about upcoming changes to city garbage rates. And just to note, we will have the hearing at the May 9 meeting, the May 9 Planning Commission for this item.
That's on.
Okay, great. Perfect. All right.
Well, good evening, Planning Commissioners. It's nice to be here with you, and I suppose virtually with other Planning Commissioners who I think are on Zoom, just glancing over at the monitor here. My name is Evan Polk, and I am the manager of the Waste and Materials Team at Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. We are the team that manages Portland's garbage, recycling, and composting collection systems. My pronouns are he/him. And today, we're here to brief you on the ratemaking process for the single-family residential collection system. So today's briefing is just an informational item for you and maybe a chance to have a little bit of discussion. And then the next time before you, in a couple of weeks, we'll be bringing proposed rates for the 2324 calendar, or sorry, fiscal year for single-family garbage and recycling collection. So I would like to turn it over to Quinton Bauer, who is our Solid Waste Operations Manager, to walk you through the presentation. Thanks.
Thanks, Evan. Evan, good afternoon or good evening, Commissioners. My name is Quinton Bauer, and as Evan mentioned, I'm the Waste Operations Manager at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and oversee the operations side of our solid waste system. Just as a reminder, our curbside collection includes single-family homes and duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes. Those are the only parts of our franchise system. Commercial and larger multifamily properties are an open-market system. So you can see here on the slide, we've got a lot more commercial and multifamily properties, but that's not what we're talking about today. We're just talking about residential curbside collection, and those are the rates that we set in our franchise through the city. Properties with five or more units and businesses are part of that commercial sector, and we don't set those rates. That's an open-market system. So we manage the residential collection system to do multiple things: support recycling and waste education, reduce our environmental climate footprint, deliver financially sustainable collection service with good jobs. And of course, we are always moving forward with an equity focus. But today, we're really laser-focused on the annual rate review for the residential collection system, which has a pretty set process that we go through. I'd also like to acknowledge those climate and equity goals, however. Our Solid Waste Fund pays for that climate work, and our program does climate work. We also have ongoing work focused on equity, including a low-income rate assistance program that we are rolling out next year and that will be incorporated into next year, the following year's rates. We're also going into a franchise review process that we do every five years, and that is going to include a deeper evaluation of our equity work and goals. So now I'm going to go over the process for setting the rates, as well as an initial look at the major rate drivers affecting rates this year. So as they do every year, the haulers have submitted their detailed cost reports, or what we call DCRs. Those contain their revenues and costs for the previous calendar year 2022. We then have a contracted CPA firm, a Marina, which has just completed its review of those DCRs, for the haulers that were selected for the sample to ensure that all costs are allowed and documented. So rather than taking in the account the cost for all of the haulers, we just do a subset of those that need to represent at least 75% of the customer base and at least three different haulers. This year, we included five haulers that represented 82% of the customer base. To calculate those rates, we take a sample, the sample hauler's costs, and average them to develop a per customer composite cost. Those rates are designed to cover the average cost to provide the service and allow the haulers the opportunity to earn a nine and a half percent operating margin. Those rates also include currently a 5% franchise fee that comes to the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to fund our operational costs. Once we have established the cost to provide each level of service, BPS applies discounts to smaller garbage cans and adds disincentive premiums to the larger garbage service levels to incentivize customers to reduce waste and recycle and compost more. So here are the current major service levels available to customers. The trend of folks rightsizing their garbage containers while many were home due to the pandemic has continued over this past year. The 35-gallon roll cart collected every other week is still the most common service level, while the 60- and 90-gallon roll carts have increased slightly in popularity. So about a 1% change. We saw that with the previous year and now last year as well, that people are just slightly shifting to those larger containers as they were producing more waste at home. And while we obviously want to encourage thoughtful consumption, waste reduction, and recycling, and composting, we also want to encourage customers to find the right-sized service level for their household, because we want to make sure folks have room for all their garbage in their container, rather than maybe doing a lot of wishful recycling that contributes to contamination and makes it more expensive for us to process and market our recycling. Additionally, if you get too aggressive with those, you know, incentives on smaller cans and disincentives on larger cans, that could drive people to, you know, illegal dumping and really finding other ways to cut costs. So now let's talk about some of the key cost factors that are driving the rate this year. First off, we are proposing an adjustment to our franchise fee. So due to increased operating costs and inflation, residential revenue is no longer sufficient to maintain BPS programs, which support the solid waste and recycling system. Because of these, we are proposing to increase the fee on total hauler revenue from 5% to 8%. So those costs have to be passed on to the customers, which will require an increase to the rates. Additionally, it's probably no surprise to anyone, we have inflation adjustments this year. After we have last year's average cost, we then make the adjustments for that inflation. It's important to note that inflation is not added to current rates, but applied to the actual costs of providing service. So you don't take the rate and then say inflation was up 8%, so the entire rate's going to go up 8%, right? You take the actual costs incurred by the haulers and integrate that inflation cost. This way, reduced operating costs can mitigate the effect of inflationary pressure. Since we're making rates for the 2324 fiscal year, the inflation forecast is for the 18-month period of January 23 through June of 24. So based on that, we're looking at about a 2.8% inflation on an annualized basis. We also adjust labor costs, taking into account union contracts and general cost of living. We also adjust labor costs, taking into account union contracts and general cost of living. Currently, that's looking like it'll be around a 10% increase on an annualized basis. Next up, we look at fuel costs and diesel prices are projected to decrease about 20% next year. We do have a number of haulers that have switched to compressed natural gas vehicles and CNG prices are also expected to decrease by approximately 16%. So based on that weighted average of fuel mix, the rates will include fuel costs that are about 19 and a half percent lower than the hauler's fuel cost for 2022. That's kind of the one bright spot is fuel costs going down. The 2022 composite cost contains significant increases due to inflation. When the inflationary adjustments are made, the rate components for garbage recycling and organics collection are all expected to increase by about 10 to 15% overall. The next costs that we include are garbage disposal costs. Those reflect the amount of garbage disposed and the price haulers pay to tip their garbage at Metro's transfer stations or other private transfer stations in the area, which also includes the cost to send the waste to the landfill. This year, that tip fee, Metro has proposed to increase by about 2, 9.2%. So that's going to go from approximately, going to approximately $134.81 a pound. So it looks like that's about a close to a $13 increase per ton in the metro fee. We check the amount of garbage in two ways. First, the haulers report how much they collect. And then we also contract with Community Environmental Services at PSU to weigh a sample of individual garbage garbage carts several times a year. So we get a sense of how much the different sized carts weigh and can price them appropriately. This is also a double check on the amounts of garbage collected from residents. And so far, we've seen those weights have gone down or have increased or no, gone down just a little bit this year. Sorry, as people are now eating out more than eating at home, so. We also have costs for yard debris and food scraps. And again, Metro is increasing their tip fee about four and a half percent to $87.15 a ton. And then lastly, recycling rates are taken to effect. And as many of you know, revenue from recycled materials used to be in offset to the rates. So haulers actually used to get paid for the recycling materials that they took in. But in 2017, that shifted worldwide due to a drop in recycled material prices and increased processing costs at recycling, sorting facilities. Since then, haulers have now been charged for processing their recycling materials. Prices for recycling materials deteriorated in 2022 relative to '21, and that will put for upward pressure on the rates. So in summary, inflation, poor recycling materials markets and higher tip fees have put combined to put significant material upward pressure on the rates. We're still working on what the final rates will look like at this point, but the increase will likely fall between a 10 and 14% increase, which is quite a bit above the normal increase from year to year. We will be back with those final rates on the, at the May ninth hearing for this group. And then we will take that and recommend that to City Council on May 24th and then those rates take effect on July 1st through June 30th of the following year. With that, that ends our presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Lang?
Thank you. The the Metro tipping fee, that nine plus percent, what was it in previous years? Is that substantially higher?
Well, this would be a second consecutive year of an increase that's around 8%. Last year, Metro Council approved a disposal fee increase concept that would most likely result in about 8% increases every year for about a five year period. And that was framed as a as a way to kind of manage expectations for fee increases over that period. So the the most recent increases that Metro has made in disposal have been significant compared to prior years.
Yeah, okay. And I was curious too, this used to be the Planning Sustainability Committee or Commission. Will this ultimately go to that, that the Sustainability Commission?
That's what we anticipate.
Okay.
Yeah, Patricia Deveneifer for the record, that's correct. This is an item that per the code requires a stop at commission, but in the future, it will be the Climate Sustainability Commission rather than this commission. But you're doing a service in this regard right now, so we we thank you for that.
And if you realize that this is really fascinating to you, then maybe in the future, consider applying for the Sustainability Commission.
Thank you both. I am really interested in the income reduction that you have stated would be effective as of the next year rate increase cycle, is that right? Is there any sense of how much that reduction in terms of a percentage rate? Or is there more research needed to really determine what that scale will look like and how folks will qualify?
Yeah, we're just kicking off that process. We're getting a contract in place with Marina, the same company that does the analysis of those DCRs I mentioned. And so they'll be working with us on stakeholder engagement and comparing it to other jurisdictions plans. And then we'll be moving forward with that. We do, there is an interest to align it with other city programs, particularly the Water Bureau's existing low income rate assistance program.
Great, thank you. I see both Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Spivak have their hand raised. Commissioner Alexander, go ahead.
I was curious, you spoke about the distribution of cart sizes across customer base. The responsibility for sort of communicating the ability to sort of go larger or go smaller, does that lie with the haulers or with BPS? You know, I've been a resident for 12 years and I noticed the changes with my neighbors, but I don't know that I've ever sort of seen incentive or disincentive to sort of make that decision. Who communicates that?
I believe that's it's really a shared responsibility. So we have a whole education and outreach team and that team is responsible for communicating our rate structure and encouraging people to do, make the most sustainable choices in their, in how they manage their waste, right? But then the haulers also have responsibilities to distribute our materials to all the customers, to new customers and existing customers throughout the year. So it's really, I think, a shared responsibility.
Yeah, if if one of our franchised collectors, you know, is seeing a consistent overflow in a in a garbage cart, they might reach out to that customer and encourage them to change their their capacity. The incentives that were mentioned earlier as part of the rates are really, really are kind of invisible, right? We're just trying to, through monetary mechanism, make a slight adjustment to very slightly encourage folks to generate less waste. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Okay, Commissioner Spivak?
Thank you. It's maybe a little bit of an update, but also a question. DEQ, Oregon DEQ has $8 million available in a grant round right now to electrify trash recycling haulers. And I understand Portland haulers have had reasonable success. One out of two were funded in the past couple of years that applied. But also the local haulers sometimes have a challenge going through the application process because it's not their core business to apply for grants. So I just wanted to check in to confirm that Portland will help its haulers who are interested, apply for funding to get these more efficient trucks. And the question kind of is, and I know staff's already tracking this, but if someone does get a big grant to cover a new truck, does that, is that just on the margins or does that actually affect rates if someone outside of Portland ends up paying for such a large capital cost for a hauler?
Well, a truck can cost, you know, getting, moving up towards upwards of half a million dollars. And that starts to be at a size where, you know, that's a somewhat meaningful cost in the system. There are a lot of trucks and the cost for those trucks is being depreciated over multiple years. So it would, it would take a little doing to find out, you know, essentially what the benefit, the financial benefit of a truck that that we didn't have to pay for would be. We could look into that and answer the question for you if you'd like. As far as our role in in encouraging the electrification or at least the reduction in emissions from our garbage fleet, that's something we've been really active on and will continue to be active around. You know, whether that's encouraging our collectors, making sure they're aware of upcoming grant opportunities or if need be, you know, providing them with access to folks who might know a little bit more about electric trucks to to bolster their applications, that's the kind of thing we could do.
Vice Chair Thompson?
I have a question about the franchise agreement process and when, where we're at or what the status is with that.
Our franchise agreement typically lasts for a 12 year term, but it provides an opportunity in the fifth year of each of each franchise term for the city to to pause basically and review and ask the question, how, you know, how well does the franchise serve our community? And are there ways to make incremental improvements in the way that it serves the community? And at the end of the six month review process that happens at that five year period, which we just launched just about a month ago. At the end of that six month process, the City Council has the opportunity, if they so choose, to renew the term with a revised franchise agreement. And that that starts a new 12 year term.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Within that process, can you talk about how community benefit, how those goals are advanced within the context of the discussion and what sorts of opportunities there are? When we had this discussion over a year ago, there was a lot of focus on BIPOC participation and local small hauler participation, COVID businesses. And at the time, what we heard was that, well, that's not really part of this discussion, that's part of the franchise agreement. And so I'm just, A, wanting to bring that up again because it's something that there is a lot of interest. And even though we don't have a sustainability commission, I think it's really important that these things don't get lost, you know, or waylaid. But also, I'm just genuinely curious, like what sorts of opportunities there are for those discussions in that agreement process?
Yeah. A couple of things come to mind, but can you first just clarify for me? You said you were talking about this about six months ago in this space?
Calendar year or so, if this happens at the same time every year, it's spring, April.
Okay, so it may have been the prior year's rate review process. Okay, okay, thank you, that's helpful. The last franchise review process that was initiated in the 2018, 2017 to 18 timeframe and then finalized, I think in early 2019, did a fairly deep dive look at how the residential franchise system could be revised or updated to to create opportunities for, let's say, BIPOC owned businesses, for example, to participate in the system. And at the same time as well, there was some additional efforts undertaken to request like demographic information from our franchisees. And a number of things have happened in the intervening years since then. For example, collectors, the franchisees have initiated and had almost 100 folks graduate from a program called Driving Diversity, which seeks to bring in new folks to train as drivers for vehicles, people of color. And another piece that the city has been looking at more intentionally is using its own procurement power. For example, through the public collection contracts that we hold, which are now awarded to COBID firms. And so I guess what happened, what I want to say is that after the last franchise review process, the conclusion was that the the ability, the opportunities that the city had to make significant change in waste and recycling were primarily in spaces outside the franchise in places where we had more direct leverage. That said, we will still keep identifying, looking at how the franchise system can improve in this area. One of the things that happened in, I think, as a result of the last franchise review was the addition of a 90 day notification period. When a franchisee wanted to sell their business, required a 90 day notification period to give a COVID firms an opportunity to, you know, to take a look at that and potentially participate. And one of the things that could happen as part of this franchise review is to look at the question of, has that, what difference has that made? And is there a need or an opportunity to to look further at that as as part of the franchise review or potentially outside the review process? Sometimes one of the things that happens in the review is we identify some opportunities for change and that change really can't be handled through the franchise agreement itself, but it can be handled through city code or administrative rule.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
And then I have one request, just given the approximate range of increase that we're looking at, that's not insubstantial. And there are households that will be burdened by the accruing costs of this. And so for just my own understanding of where these costs are coming from, it would be really helpful to go back like two or three years, I don't know, 2021, 2022, 2023, and look at the total increase, once you guys have the information available for this year. And then if possible, also breaking that down according to those subcategories that you had on the slide with fuel, wages, whatever else, so that we can really understand where those costs are coming from. Thank you.
Yeah, we have our Neil, our economist, on the call as well, so he's will surely put that together for us.
Yeah, this, Vice Chair, Council. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Thompson, for for that. You actually asked some questions that I was very interested in, I was curious about as well. I was wondering if you could possibly talk about your low income rate assistance? Like, how does that actually work? And then I also had another question about, you had said that there was a a possible increase in in wages? And I was just wondering if you could maybe discuss that as well?
Well, I can speak to the the low income program and then I wonder if Neil might be able to tell us a little bit more about labor cost increases. So we just initiated a project to explore and then eventually propose a low income qualifying discount for garbage and recycling costs for single family residents. So at this point, it's just a, something that we're committed to exploring and proposing and we don't know the scope of that discount or the magnitude. Neil, can you speak to the question about labor cost increases? Oh, you're muted.
Oh, I should be unmuted, can you hear me?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, so for the labor inflator, we take a look at both union contracts. So like Waste Management, they just put a new union contract in place. And like a lot of businesses, they face challenges, all the haulers face challenges with finding employees the last couple of years. And what we're seeing from both union contracts as well as just general cost of employment indices is a rather substantial increase in what businesses need to pay. So a portion of that increase is sort of grounded in what union contracts are. And the new union contracts tend to have a fairly large bump because they just renegotiated that for the first year. And then it's sort of a weighted average of of the union contract as well as a sort of general cost of employment index, which sort of applies across the board to a lot of businesses. So it's a, it's a relatively substantial, you know, inflationary increase. It is applied to what they reported on their costs. And the haulers have, over the years, have done a very good job in sort of be, you know, being relatively efficient and driving down their labor hours for the services that they provide. And I, one correction, that the 10% increase, that's actually the 18 month increase. I think on an annualized basis, it's about 7.6% or so.
Thanks for that. I just, do you have like a percentage point on that, on those?
I don't know if you are able to divulge that or if you know, but if you know if there's a percentage point on the, on the, on the labor increase bump, or do you know what that? For the union contracts? Yes. I believe off the top of my head, it's about, I think for the first year, it's like 15%. Again, that's just sort of off the top of my head for, for that. And then the, the cost of sort of the employment cost index, that's probably, oh, that's probably about 6%. So if it wasn't for the union contracts, you'd probably be looking at something closer to 6%, not 10%. Thank you so much. I, I appreciate our, our haulers and the guys who take care of our sanitary needs in the city. And, you know, I just, I feel that they should definitely be, their labor should definitely be honored and respected. And I know you guys are gonna do the best you can to make sure that that falls through for them.
When does this go to online testimony? Does that open up immediately after this? So we do have the public hearing portion right at the May 9th? Okay, so online testimony will open?
I think as soon as it's posted, it would be open. All right, so is this already posted? I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, the project is able to take testimony anytime. This one is not going through the MAP app. So the process is people will submit testimony either to staff or through the planning commission email that I forward to you all.
Okay.
The registration link for testifying at the May 9th meeting will be open on Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any additional comments, questions from commissioners? We will have another opportunity to discuss at the May 9th meeting. And of course, hear any public testimony at that time.
I do have one more thing on the topic of testimony. How has the public been alerted to the opportunity to provide testimony on that, on this topic?
We don't, I don't believe the city as a matter of course, does any widespread public notification for the process. It's just an annual rate review process. The, you know, perhaps unfortunately or fortunately, it's a process that doesn't have a wide scope of discretion. The city, city's code requires us to look at the costs of providing this essential service and adjust the fees to, to meet the, the target margin and cover the costs. And the city council is in fact required to do that under a code. So when we're in spaces like this, talking about the, the costs, it's very helpful educationally for us to understand where the, you know, what, what can, what concerns there might be about cost drivers? Or for us to, to use this as a platform to communicate with stakeholders around where cost increases are emerging from. They give us maybe some long range ability to, to think about how to, how to manage for those over time. But unfortunately, in the moment, we're, we end up on this, on this very defined track with a very defined, clear goal that says, okay, we have to raise the rates or lower them to, to meet the, the target required in city code. So I think in part for that reason, it's, it's not typically seen as a highly stakeholder driven process. It's, it's much more formulaic.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good question.
Okay, thank you all for that presentation. We are going to take a five minute break. We're doing great on time, so let us reconvene at 10 after 6. Coming back after a short break. The next item on the agenda is to continue the wonderful series of training that BPS staff has been providing us with as the newly formed planning commission. So we have Tom Armstrong, Ariel Kane, Sam Brookham, and Morgan Tracy. Please feel free to correct me if I've mispronounced, but welcome, and we're looking forward to the training this evening.
Great, thank you. I'm Tom Armstrong. I'm a supervising planner here at BPS. And I manage the housing and economic policy team. And online is Sam Brookham and Ariel Kane, who are part of my team. And then with me tonight is Morgan Tracy, another planner, who will be talking a little bit later tonight about the zoning code changes that we've done in the recent past. Next one, please. So tonight, as part of this training, I was gonna go over, give you a high level overview of the housing goals and policies that are in chapter five of the comprehensive plan. And then we were gonna provide some information about housing in Portland and recent housing production trends. And then talk about the housing needs analysis and the housing production strategy, which are two state required documents that we do that will be coming to you later this year and into 2024. So I think you've seen this diagram before in a previous training. This gives it sort of the elements of the comprehensive plan. And just to highlight, we're gonna talk tonight about the goals and policies that are in the plan. And then a little bit about the housing needs analysis and the buildable lands inventory, which we consider to be supporting documents or background documents to the comprehensive plan. But they are required by the state under Oregon statewide planning laws. And they are recommended by the planning commission and adopted by ordinance by council as part of the comprehensive plan itself.
And we are not seeing the, okay, working on it. Sure.
Yeah, maybe go back once.
We're just taking one moment to align the screen share for the presentation. There we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
So as I said, we'll talk a little bit about the goals and policies tonight and then dig a little deeper into the supporting documents that will be coming before you later this year, that eventually get adopted by council to be incorporated as an update to the comprehensive plan. So jumping into the goals and policies in chapter five, go ahead and go to the next one. So we have five high level broad goals that really address the, the spectrum of housing issues in terms of diversity, which really gets at, at supply, equitable access, addresses some of the affordability issues. Healthy Connected City, which you heard a little bit about last time, is really about location and, and where housing is located in, in Portland. Of course, affordable housing. And then getting into, and this sort of ventures over into some of the sustainability issues around high performance, housing, energy efficiency, quality of housing. We, you'll see in the comprehensive plan, you know, we have bundled these policies to roughly correspond to each of the five goals. You know, the first bundle again is about sort of housing choice, the diversity of, of the types of housing that we have in Portland. We have a goal in policy 5.2 to capture at least 25% of the regional growth. We recently, we've been as high as 35% of the, or 38% of the new units in the Portland metro region. Last year, we dipped to 22% of new units in the region. The, we, we also base this off of the future forecasts from Metro and, and eventually now with new state legislations, the state will be preparing those forecasts. The most recent metro forecast had us, had Portland with about 29% of the future housing growth of the region. The state, early preliminary state forecast had as, as much as 45% of the region. So, you know, we've been pretty successful and you'll see some, some slides later about how much production we've had. So all of these are within, within the range of possibilities. Some of these other policies, especially like 5.6, the middle housing, really drive some of our zoning decisions and, and are the foundation, as you will learn later, about the residential infill project that really direct those future, future projects that we have. Next slide. There's a bundle of policies around housing access. And as I said, some of these address sort of what I would call little A affordability, which is affordability in general for people in Portland. This section also has sort of the, the suite of policies, of equity policies that begin to get at displacement risk and, and really sort of provide our guidance for how we analyze various zoning proposals to see who benefits and who's burdened by those changes. And yeah, go ahead. And one of the tools that, that we use that you will see, you know, starting back in 2012, we worked with Dr. Lisa Bates at Portland State to develop a displacement risk analysis or a vulnerability analysis, where we look at the demographic factors that, that make a household vulnerable to displacement. And, and this is really focused on residential. And, and what we're looking for and what you see in this map is, is areas that have a lot of alignment with these four factors that, and that being household income, housing cost burden, people of color, and education attainment. As in, you know, people without four year college degrees have sort of less opportunity to get a better job. What you were just talking about as part of the, the solid waste rates, you know, their ability to keep up with increasing housing costs are more limited. If you could, yeah, so here's a larger version of this map. And we can send out a link to our online tool where you can see it. But the areas in darker blue, the, the, the top two, the, the blue and the darker blue are the areas that we really consider to be most vulnerable in Portland. And those are the areas where we see those four or five factors really line up in concentrations. This is at a census tract level of analysis. And, and we, we've just updated this based on the most recent available data. And, and we try and keep this fresh so that when we go into a project in an area, say like Lentz, where we know there's a high degree of vulnerability, we were, take a closer look or more consideration as to what the impacts of the proposed changes might be. We have a bundle of policies around location. And, and the key ones there are about access to opportunity and encouraging new development in opportunity areas. Next slide, I think you saw this complete neighborhoods map last session as part of the urban design look. And where, how we use this from a housing policy standpoint is that we, we really wanna look at when we're doing projects, look at encouraging more housing in high opportunity areas or more complete neighborhoods, the yellow areas and the, and the, the deeper red orange areas on the map. And then the flip side is, you know, in the, the pink areas, the areas with, with lower completeness or lower opportunities, we wanna encourage more infrastructure investment to, to sort of increase the, the completeness of those areas. One, you know, we have a goal in the Portland plan that 80% of Portlanders will live in a complete neighborhood by 2035. We've, about two thirds of Portlanders live in a complete neighborhood today. About 75% of our recent housing production has been in complete neighborhoods. But we're not gonna be able to grow our way to that 80%. We're gonna have to make infrastructure investments and other changes to sort of increase the coverage of complete neighborhoods in Portland in order to meet that, that 80% goal. As I said, we have a suite of policies that are, that deal with what, what I would call more the big A affordable housing, the regulated affordable housing. These come with the, the sort of requirements, contracts. They have the public funding either through the Portland Housing Bureau or Metro Bonds or state funding that have long term set asides for housing. In policy 526, we, we actually set an affordable housing target, which was 10,000 new regulated affordable housing units by 2035. That's roughly 8% of the growth, which is, you'll see later, roughly 8% of our housing stock. So we were just trying to keep up with the growth. And so far, you know.
Sorry to interrupt. We, we actually have a couple of questions now from commissioners.
If you could just wait for one more slide and we'll finish this little module on policy. And we'll break, we'll stop for some questions and then we can move on from there.
Okay, and Commissioner Alexander, you can go first when we get to that break. I know you've had your hand up.
So I, I'll just, with this, you know, so far, the housing bureau has produced about 4,800 units of affordable housing. We're roughly halfway through that 2035 time horizon. So, you know, pretty good. But, you know, we are sort of spending through the, the city and Metro bond funding. And so, you know, the future is a little murky on our ability to continue that pace. 535 inclusionary housing is something that, that you will hear a lot more about. And 537 mobile home parks, again, these are both examples of policies that are in the comp plan that drove our projects and our decisions. And you'll hear about both of these a little later this evening. And then finally, we have, we have one, one policy on homelessness. It's, it's an interesting artifact of the time, you know, in 2012 to 16. We were really thinking as homelessness as a sort of a different, separate, not a land use planning issue, but more of a service issue. We're now, you know, bringing that more into the land use planning realm. And the state is moving more towards providing rules and, and requirements on us to consider that. Again, you'll, you'll hear a little bit of late, later about the shelter to housing code projects that address this continuum of housing. And then, you know, we have the, you know, other general policies that give us some direction around renter protections and healthy housing that, that helps sort of reinforce some of our initiatives. So I'll pause there and, and see what kind of questions are about the general policy framework. So I'll pause there and, and see what kind of questions are about the general policy framework.
Go ahead, Commissioner Alexander. We can't, there we go.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can now.
As, as you spoke about targeted populations living within, um, completed neighborhoods and as you talked about the forty-eight hundred threshold, is there a distinction made between occupancy versus ownership? In, in those units? I'm, I'm trying to get some sense of, I mean, whether people are in spaces that are rentals, whether there's a, an intentional movement towards ownership in communities where there's unrepresentation or underrepresentation around homeownership and just what's being measured? I guess over time is, is my question.
We have not, uh, that's a good question and we, to date, we have not really gone that deeply in terms of looking at, at, um, that access to opportunity and how it varies across, either different demographics or different ownership versus rental. But it is something that we can, uh, dive into, especially as, as part of the upcoming housing needs analysis, um, to, to go deeper in, into those issues.
Is there a follow-up, Commissioner Alexander?
By with, I'm not asking for a follow-up, but as this data continues to be massaged, it would be, I think of value to begin to see if there are shifts. If we're measuring it, we can determine whether it's moving in one direction or another.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Lang and then Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. How, how's affordable housing defined in the comp plan?
That's a good question. I think it's, it is, um, anything that is, uh, regulated, you know, sort of has a, a, basically an, a, a contract agreement with the Housing Bureau that sets it aside. Usually those are at least thirty-year contracts. And now under the inclusionary housing program, it's ninety-nine years. So permit, what, what might be considered permanently affordable, income restricted, usually that income restriction is at eighty percent area median income and below. Um, and we'll get into more of that in a, in a little bit.
Okay.
At, at those income levels.
Thank you. The, the other question, and I was writing faster than I can spell. When you were talking about complete neighborhoods and you said you can't get there through growth alone? And you said something like, like infrastructure or something. What, what do you mean by how do you, how do you do a complete, create a complete neighborhood? What's, what are the tools that you have to work with to do something like that?
Sure. So, you know, the, the factors that go in, it's a mix of, of sort of hard city infrastructure, like access to parks or access to transit. So in some ways, we work with our bureau partners to fill in the gaps. And we've been doing a lot of those investments out in East Portland, um, both in terms of parks and, and access to transit. The other elements, uh, especially the top two there, healthy food and commercial services can fall on, on BPS through zoning and looking at, at areas that, you know, such as what you'll hear, um, later this year, the Lower Southeast Rising project. Areas that, that may be underserved by commercial services where we could go in and look at, what are appropriate locations where we might expand commercial mixed-use zonings so that there can be more commercial space for shops and services that people can walk to or, or, or be close by and easily accessible.
Just wanted to, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Patricia Diefenhofer, just wanted to point out, you know, the slide, the slide that we put back up, you can see the factors, that, that list of bullets are the things that, you know, make for a complete neighborhood per, per our policy. So as Tom said, some of those things are, you know, hard infrastructure that, that city provides. Or, you know, is provided through development, but I mean, some of those things are provided through development, um, like obviously grocery stores or shops and commercial services. But the, the role that, um, planning plays is making sure that the zoning, that there's appropriate zoning in locations to ensure, for example, that there's enough commercial, you know, zoning to, to allow for those kinds of uses. So that's, it's a combination of, you know, having the right zoning and rules in place and then hopefully encouraging the right kind of development and pairing that with cities' infrastructure investments to try to complete, to create more complete neighborhoods.
Thank you. And that's why I asked the question is trying to, what's our role in that process? And of course, whenever we look at these maps, at least my eyes go immediately to where I live, which is, which is really not very desirable in a lot of ways. And, and, and so how, I'm thinking in my neighborhood, which is way out in East County, how, how do you bring those type of things in? I would, I would love to be able to walk to a grocery store, but it's just not feasible at all. And I don't see how that's done, although I see some other things happening in that neighborhood. And I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll have more discussions about those down the road. But it's interesting and, and thank you for connecting the dots there because that's where, where I was going with my brain too, is that's gonna kind of fall on, on us to, to look at more intensely to, to make those decisions.
Right. And that, and that also sort of drives where we choose our projects, our next area plan project to, to try and fill in some of those gaps.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Patel and then Vice Chair Pansel.
Thank you. Um, I had two questions, but Commissioner Lang just had, had to ask the same question that I had about how, um, complete neighborhoods is accomplished. So thanks, um, for clarifying that. My other question was about how, uh, the, uh, the map in a previous slide about the total vulnerability risk score. How often is the data, uh, to identify those areas updated?
So we just updated it. It had been a few years since, I believe it was twenty eighteen when we last updated it. We want this to be a tool that not only our bureau partners use, but the community can rely on. And so we've, we've made a commitment to update this every, at least every two years. I mean, the, the demographic data doesn't change that quickly. But we do want to keep it fresh and, and have it be a, a valuable tool that, that people can rely on.
Thank you. And did, you might have already mentioned, but what are the, the factors that go into determining a vulnerability risk?
Yeah. So, so you can see the, the, the five factors here. There's, there, there's one based on, on housing cost burden, um, which is a measure in, in the census data around how much households pay for their housing costs. And if you're paying more than thirty percent of your income, then you're considered a cost-burdened household. And so that's a sign of, of pressure and, and, um, you know, potentially being displaced because you can't keep up with those costs. We have a demographic, uh, factors there, um, not only with communities of color, but because of the, the, um, equity policies at the city really putting an emphasis or looking at where, uh, the black and indigenous, uh, people live in Portland as well. And then as I was explaining earlier, um, a, a four-year college, lacking a four-year college degree in terms of education attainment and, and how that unlocks employment opportunities at those higher income levels. And then just basic household income, um, as well.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Pansel?
Yeah, uh, thank you for being here. I was curious about, um, um, on the middle housing. You know, you know, of course, we all want Portland to be beautiful and, and welcoming to everyone. But I'm, I'm curious if there's been any, um, plan to like, uh, keep, keep those, those communities, um, affordable, like, uh, to keep gentrification basically at bay. When you have these complete communities, because complete communities are great, you know? So what, is there a plan to like, um, you know, uh, or if there's been any thought into like, how do we make sure that these costs for these communities don't rise? Or, or.
Yeah, I think it's a multi-pronged strategy and we'll, we'll get a little more deeper. It's more than middle housing. I think at a, at the highest level, again, it, it's trying to, especially, uh, trying to drive a lot of the mark, market rate, uh, more expensive housing into the areas that are complete. And with that, especially the larger projects come inclusionary housing. They have a, a, a segment that is required to be affordable. I think the other is, uh, is to just create more complete neighborhoods, right? Create more of the nicer places for people to live and, and to spread that out and to spread that sort of demand out, um, across the, the, um, across the city. I think what you will see here in just a minute is that, you know, the, the, the central city and the inner neighborhoods that are more complete have seen most of the growth in the last twelve to fifteen years. And, you know, that attraction is, is happening. And, and so that's where the inclusionary housing policy can provide some of that affordability to help maintain the, the connections in those neighborhoods. And yet at the same time, we need to be creating more of those nice neighborhoods.
And I, and I'm, and just one more question. I, I wasn't quite sure to, I'm so sorry that I'm, I'm kind of ignorant on this, but you know, is there any type of like, for like this inclusionary housing or, um, or middle income housing that, that either the city or the state is involved and possibly being the, uh, the planner or the builder, you know, so that there is some type of like community control of rates, um, to be more competitive with private.
Right. That, that is the, the, what we call the regulated affordable housing that has, um, funding from this. Usually the, the city provide, the city or the state provides funding to typically a nonprofit developer, sometimes a for-profit developer. They get that funding in exchange for a contract or a promise to keep those units affordable at a certain income level, um, over the long term. And increasingly, you know, we originally started out at thirty years and then it went up to sixty years. Now it took, the standard seems to be ninety-nine years. To, so that that funding, um, for those regulated units, uh, really, you know, that's where that, those are the, um, permanently affordable units. And that's how we can create, but that is only eight percent of our housing stock.
We often refer to, uh, capital A affordable housing, that's sort of the regulated, uh, what, what Tom was describing. It's got a term of, of duration that it's, it's going to be regulated for and it keeps it at a, a certain percent below median income levels for, for sets rent levels below a median income level. And then there's sort of lowercase A affordable housing, which is, uh, housing that is competitively less expensive than other housing around it. So when you hear us talk generally about affordable housing, that might be the non-regulated pool versus sort of the capital A affordable housing, uh, just a slight distinction there. Back to your first question, uh, I also thought it would be good to mention, uh, the project, like the West Portland Town Center is a project where we're creating a center in a place. And as part of that project, bringing a lot of, um, uh, tools and experimental tools to address potential displacement pressures and, yeah, gentrification sort of pressures as, as that area transforms and changes to maintain some of that naturally occurring affordable housing as well as, uh, uh, increasing opportunities for lower-cost housing and lower-income households.
Maybe if I could, I could just, Patricia Diefenhofer, just, um, sort of sum up. I thi, I think what you're hearing is that increasingly we're looking for more and more tools. And that, that includes a wide range of things and it's usually very multi-pronged. So for example, some of it is, is actual public funding and financing of, of housing in order to get the regulated affordable housing that does not, you know, it's the, the rents are stabilized and they stay at the, at a certain level, right? For, for people of incomes like eighty percent of AMI or sixty percent of area median income. There's also using the zoning code to try to incentivize more, uh, affordable housing in the, um, inclusionary housing. There's also, um, you know, trying to protect naturally occurring, what, what Morgan called naturally occurring affordable housing, which is affordable housing that's not regulated, but that exists and it naturally is, um, uh, you know, has lower rents than, than market rates. And there's different strategies that we can use and we, we are experimenting with, I think is a good way to put it, to try to protect and, and not, you know, to try to protect those particular, um, housing that exists in an area. So there's a, a number of different strategies and over time, you're going to hear a lot more about this, um, through the different housing, initiatives that we're working on, if that makes sense. Yeah.
I see Ariel has their hand up. Would you like to go ahead, Ariel?
We can't.
I don't know if they can hear us. They were, they were going like lips at some point, maybe.
Okay, okay.
I, I saw some of this and I was like, oh, I feel like they're communicating with, doesn't involve us.
Maybe we can throw in the chat.
If you, yeah, if, can you hear us at all? No? Nope. Okay.
Okay, I think we take just a moment to see if we can get our remote, remote participants back with us here.
And in the background.
Yep.
Can you all in line hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Here we go.
Okay. Let's, um, continue. So, um, we were just. Okay, let's um, continue. So, um, we were just presenting some questions to staff regarding this section. Um, I know we have more of the training to go and so I actually printed my own and have all kinds of marked up because this section is especially important to me, but I'm not going to throw those at you now. Let's go ahead and proceed, if that's okay with the commission to the next part of the training, which is still housing related.
You can send them to us and we'll turn them back into a memo to, to the commission.
Perfect, okay.
So I'm going to turn things over to Ariel, who's going to cover some highlights of recent housing trends.
Hey, hi, so I'm Ariel Kane. Can you all hear me just fine?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, great, yeah, so I'm just going to cover a few things related to housing trends, a little bit about income and affordability as well as recent permitting and we'll talk a little bit more about that capital A affordable unit um, trend as well as unregulated affordable trends uh, here in Portland. So just to get started, um, I would love to show you the next slide um, about income. So we know housing preference is shaped by a lot of different things, uh, household size, different lifestyle needs. But actual choice, location and access is pretty significantly influenced by household income. So we're, we have been looking at sort of identifying households that are more likely to struggle to meet the cost of housing based on their income and it helps us sort of understand the current and future affordable housing needs. So we know Portland has been becoming increasingly wealthier, um, creating there's been a trend towards higher incomes with about forty percent of all households earning more than a hundred and thousand, hundred thousand dollars per year, um, and forty percent of incomes. Forty percent of households having incomes that are greater than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, which is a regional determination for income based on household size. And for reference, twenty twenty-two, the one hundred percent rate for a family of four was a hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars. And so on the flip side of that is we see that the number of lower income households are decreasing in Portland and that's for a number of reasons. But we also are seeing that incomes are increasing for all racialized and ethnic groups from this twenty-ten to twenty-twenty period. However, we're still seeing a disparity. Household income levels are rising the most significantly for white householders. Another factor that we're looking at is having cost burden, which Tom had mentioned. So this is the thirty percent of your household income being spent on housing costs means you are cost burdened. And so we're also looking at it again by that income level, that affordability uh, level based on the regional income by household size. So eighty percent is where we sort of determine that low income range, uh, to date sixty K, sixty thousand is about eighty percent for a one-person household, or that would be about double the minimum wage. And about eighty-five thousand is eighty percent um, for a four-person household. So when we look at this table, we see that um, about thirty percent of all of Portland's households are lo- are, are cost burdened. And thirty-one percent of Portland's households are low income and cost burdened. So meet that are below that eighty percent threshold. That's about eighty-four thousand households that are needing more of more affordable housing to be able to live comfortably, safely, you know, and in their neighborhood of choice. And we're also looking at, um, where do our households live? So overall, uh, we're seeing a trend towards more households occupying multi-dwelling units, so those larger apartment buildings with twenty or more units at twenty-one percent. Um, but we're still seeing a large, uh, greater than half um, of our households that are occupying detached houses or single-family homes. Um, in the last couple of years, we've been seeing trends of seventy-five to eighty percent of our production in that multi-dwelling sort of category. Um, so by twenty thirty-five, we expect that these numbers will be sort of switched forty percent detached to about sixty percent multi-dwelling. We're also looking a little bit deeper and just seeing what the differences between overall housing and then owner occupied and renter occupied. So we are seeing an increasing amount of renters in these larger apartment buildings, about thirty-nine percent up from thirty percent in twenty-ten. Um, and we're also seeing that decreasing shares uh, living in detached houses or in these multi-dwelling up to four units with just twenty pers- twenty-one percent of all renters in these uh, smaller unit dwellings. So the next couple of slides, we'll talk about permits. So this is just the housing production over the last several decades. So over the last three decades, we've been seeing that increasing share of permitting going towards multi-dwelling units. So from fifty-eight percent in the decade leading up to two thousand and three. And then in the twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-two decade, we're seeing an increase up to seventy-eight percent. In the last decade, we saw that single dwelling detached housing accounted for less than ten percent of new development, uh, which is a a bit of a decrease from that thirty percent we were seeing in the decade up to two thousand and three.
I'll just note there that, that trend, there's sort of two things going on there. One is over this last thirty years, we've really increased the zoning and the density um, it, within the city. And at the same time, we've been building out the, the detached, single-family land that is available. And so as, as those lots become harder and harder to find, you see that, that production declining um, over this, this time period.
Great, thanks, Tom. Uh, so when we sort of zoom out and we look at the total number of units that have been produced over the last twenty years, um, we're seeing, you know, a pretty big dip in that two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve Great Recession in the units permitted. And then after that, we start to see housing production sort of ramping back up. Three thousand to six thousand units per year with that all-time peak of about seven thousand units in twenty seventeen. Um, you can also see sort of at the bottom of the, there's sort of a blue wave. Uh, that's the emergence of accessory dwelling units um, coming up in two thousand and ten. And then when we zoom back in a little bit, we're seeing, um, you know, over the last ten, ten years, um, we're still seeing an increase, we're seeing uh, from the twenty-twenty sort of depth, we're sta- starting to see more production come back up. Over the last two years, between seventy and eighty percent of our multi-dwelling, um, a multi-dwelling permits accounted for the total within all of the permits. We're also looking at by pattern area, understanding where development and permitting is occurring. So there's been an increased share of development in that inner pattern area, jumping from the decade leading up to two thousand and three, about thirty-three percent to almost sixty-one percent. And then we're seeing the share of units in central city has been staying pretty consistent while western and eastern areas, the share of permits in those areas are seeing a, a significant decline. Uh, the next couple of slides, we'll talk about that capital A regulated affordable housing units. We currently have about twenty-four thousand units of regulated affordable housing, uh, that's about eight percent of our overall housing stock. Out of those twenty-four thousand units, about fifteen thousand or sixty-five percent are in those areas considered vulnerable. So this is the same map that we saw before with the vulnerable risk areas. So uh, these areas have higher renters, higher proportions of community of color, populations without bachelor's degree and households um, that have that income below for eighty percent um, median family income. Additionally, uh, you can kind of see the distribution of where regulated affordable housing has been occurring and it's also occurring pretty significantly along uh, or within a thousand feet of high-traffic roads, which is a highway, freeway or other major arterials such as eighty-second Avenue or MLK. That's about seventeen thousand of our units, or seventy-two percent are happening in those areas. We also have affordable housing in the pipeline, so we do have more affordable housing coming, so about thirty-four hundred units. One-third of which should be deeply affordable to that lower income bracket of about thirty percent of the area median income. Thirty-eight percent, uh, so also just about a third are going to be family-sized. Sort of loosely divided, I believe, as two to three bedrooms per unit. Additionally, twenty-four percent will be permanently supportive housing available for currently um, houseless households. And then last but not least, the sort of little A uh, regulated, unregulated affordable housing. So this is naturally occurring affordable housing. It's defined by the quality. So these aren't luxury apartments by age. They're older apartments and that combined with other factors mean the rents are a little bit lower. Uh, so these kinds of units are generally smaller, but they range from rent from eight hundred and fifty to maybe thirteen hundred dollars a month. Based on our estimates. Um, out of all of the housing units that we have, that's the multifamily housing units that we talked about, about seventeen percent without regulated affordable, the rest eighty-three percent are sort of market rate, unregulated. And then fifty-three percent of those, uh, we are estimating are NOAA, or naturally occurring affordable housing. And then we take a look at where those are distributed by area. We see a large share is distributed within the inner market area. Um, and then the middle and outer area is account for about twenty percent. And then the least amount of naturally occurring affordable housing west area. Additionally, apartments, that multi-dwelling uh, unit count accounts for about seventy-five percent of all of the natu- naturally occurring affordable housing units with townhouse where attached housing accounting for a very small portion of those housing units. Then I think we'll pause for more questions before passing on.
Can we go back one slide and just um, you know, so much of this, you know, I have questions when we begin to look at shift in types of housing. I'm curious as to how we characterize, um, you know, I, I live in Sowood and we'll have an old eighty or ninety-year-old building, a home that's torn down and eight units are developed. And I'm trying to figure out the math. You know, when we talk about the emergence of townhomes or multi-units at the loss of a single dwelling, eh, how, how do we factor that into the shift? Because I'm thinking we're looking at growth and the creation, but there's also a flip side, which is the loss of one of those types of housing.
Yeah, you're, you're right. I mean, that is the trade-off. I think what we have seen and especially in, in other communities and, and especially in California communities, that if you're not making that trade-off, if you're constraining the supply that is of housing that's available in your community, the prices are going to go up. And what may look like a single affordable detached dwelling today is not going to be affordable tomorrow unless you're expanding the overall supply of housing. And so we, we, we explored this and you'll learn a little bit more about the, the residential infill. We, we explored those types of questions and and we've been sort of more biased towards, we want to see more housing in our community. We, we, it helps to keep units relatively affordable. It helps achieve our carbon reduction goals, especially when those units are being built near transit or in our complete communities where you can walk to shops and services. So there's a, there's a number of different sort of goals, values that are embedded in that. But as a community, we have been more about trying to expand that supply and, and one of those trade-offs is the loss of those lower-cost single dwellings.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm going to let you move on and we, this is a tremendous learning opportunity for me, but I come to it as an activist. And, and as I look at this particular slide, one of the things that I'm concerned about is not concerned, but reacting to a triggered body, is that a significant disproportion of the housing that's being developed in inner versus outer. The, the assumption can be where we're creating these communities for people who have been underserved, but the reality is if we look at the population shifts over the last decade, those people are not there now. You know, they, they are in the outer portion, we're seeing a disproportioning low. And so I know there's no easy answer to this, but a- again, you know, a- as an, as a community guy, it just triggers me.
Yeah.
We haven't figured out how to break the code between investment and displacement. So I, I, I just, I, and I just, I just needed to say that, or else I was going to jump up and scream.
No, you, you are, you are correct. We're, we're trying, we're trying with things like uh, inclusionary housing that gets some margin back. Um, all of these large new projects have to pay what's called a construction excise tax that goes into an affordable housing fund. Um, so we're, we're trying to do it with, with the tools that we have. And um, and sometimes it's not up to us. You know, like inclusionary housing comes with a lot of state sidebars that we have to play with. So it's not all totally up to the city to set that policy. So, um, but you, you, you're right.
It's just, it's just the stark reality of unintended consequences to, to some of this being a part of what we live with. Thank you.
I just also uh, wanted to add Patricia Diefen- Diefendorfer for the record. There's just something to also consider in that, that one single dwelling home that may be uh, replaced by eight dwelling units, for example. If that home was, you know, occupied by the person who owned it, then at least the one sort of maybe consolation is that that person was not involuntarily displaced, but rather made the choice to sell their home and, and that resulted in the redevelopment of that site that uh, allowed for more units. And then there's the, you know, again, the trade-off is like, well, now there's eight homes for people to live in versus one. So I, I just wanted to kind of lay that out too, that there's a, you know, there's people who make the choice to leave a place and then there's the, the forces where people maybe didn't have a choice and, and they had, you know, there were pressures and they could not hold on to their uh, place of residence. But I just wanted to kind of throw that into the mix of the discussion as well.
And, and it does, it has a tremendous bearing on the shifts. Doesn't have the same impact on rental markets though, which is where we saw a significant loss of rental properties within um, inner areas, particularly northeast. But anyway, I'll let them.
Thank you for raising that, Commissioner Alexander. I did want to just uh, state that the Portland Housing Bureau North Northeast Program is something that the organization I work for has participated in. I think that's a great example of trying to address some of these complicated intersections, right, between displacement and opportunity in, in, in our neighborhoods. But it is, it is a complicated issue. I want to um, offer for Commissioner Patel, you've had your hand up, go ahead.
Thanks, uh, and Ariel, thank you uh, for the presentation. Uh, the data is very informative. Uh, this question might be beyond the purposes of this presentation, but I'm wondering whether we have any data on the average permit review time from application to building permit approval by unit type?
We don't, we don't have that as part of this presentation.
Oh, of course.
That is an issue. We can, we can get you some of that data. There's various task force working on that to speed things along. So we'll, we'll get, get you some data to that.
Thanks, thanks.
Vice Chair Thompson. I was wondering about the drop-off in ADU counts from, um, I don't know when it was roughly like twenty-seventeen or twenty-eighteen and what you think is driving that. Uh, and then I also wanted to clarify if ADUs, if that includes all accessory dwelling units or only accessory dwelling units that have agreed to the the constraints of the SDC waiver and are guaranteed to not be used as short-term rentals.
Yeah, I think that's, you hit on why we saw that little dip. Was that, that, so, starting in what, two thousand and eleven, twelve, we started offering the, the SDC waiver for ADUs, uh, one more. So you, you know, twenty-ten is when ADUs, we, we did some changes to the zoning code that clarified what you could do there and um, made it easier to, to build an ADU. Made it clearer under the code how, where an ADU fell. Um, and then we started offering uh, an SDC waiver. But the dip that you see sort of starting in twenty-nineteen was when we started requiring in order to qualify for the SDC waiver, you had to agree not to be a short-term rental for ten years. And so we saw a little dip um, in the ADU production with that. And so we saw a little dip um in the ADU production with that. Um, and we've done other changes, as you'll hear about in the residential infill project. That allow you to build more ADUs on your site. So hopefully we'll see that um increase here in the, over the next couple of years.
I'm not seeing additional questions, so we can proceed to the next section. Thank you.
Okay. So this is, this is a little bit about what's coming. Um, the the housing needs analysis and the housing production strategy next. One, so the housing needs analysis, uh, we will bury you in more numbers. Um, tonight was just a taste of of what we've got. But basically, ultimately, in the housing needs analysis under statewide planning goal ten. The state requires us to show that we have enough room, enough development capacity to accommodate. Twenty years of of housing growth. And and that's the the basic exercise that we are gonna go through. Um, starting in twenty nineteen and even up to to today's late legislature, they're. Changing these requirements, upping these requirements um for for cities uh to. To be more intentional about their housing planning. And so starting, starting with this year. We're gonna, we're gonna be updating this analysis every six years. Um, and we're gonna have a mid, mid three year progress report to the state as well to check on on how we're doing. So the the H and A, the housing needs analysis um includes a community profile, some of the stuff that you just saw. Uh, and and inventory um of of sort of what our housing stock is, what kind of permits have we been seeing lately? Uh, and then we look at a a housing forecast, um, what what is gonna be the future demand? Uh, in Portland, we get a lot of that info. As I said, we get a lot of that information and and what we're building the current. H and A on is a metro forecast that allocates a certain amount of the regional growth to Portland. And so we're figuring out where that goes uh in Portland and what that might look like. Um, in in a very, a a number of different ways. Uh, and then at the same time, we do what's called a buildable land inventory or a BLI, which is the the supply side or the capacity. Where are the vacant uh land? Where is the lower value land that allows residential development? Um, you know, what is that likely to develop as? Is it eight, an eight unit townhome project? Or is it a five story sixty unit apartment building? And and so we, we go through that. Analysis to figure out how much room do we have to grow? Uh, and then we do sort of a capacity analysis or a reconciliation to look at what do we think the demand is gonna be? What do we have room to grow? And where are the gaps? And that's that those gaps are really drive our future actions. Next slide, please. And so the, what what also is new as part of this is the state is now requiring a a housing production strategy. Um, which is basically a five year action plan. So once, once we've identified those gaps, what are we gonna do about it? What are, what are our best efforts to um and and that is a wide range of tools, many of which we're already doing. Um, but could we do them better? And which new, new policies, new programs do we need to add? And and so here's a little graphic that just sort of shows how this process flows. Um, you know, that we are, look at our existing conditions, you know, one, one thing that 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 I like to think about is. Two thirds of the housing units that are gonna be here in twenty forty five are already on the ground today. And and are part of that housing stock that is gonna be here in twenty forty five. And that only about a third of that housing is gonna be new housing. And so. You know, a lot of what we have today will drive what tomorrow looks like. Um, and then we'll, we'll go through the 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 need and and look at the supply. Um, and really look at at where that that needed housing, what those gaps are. And then, and and we have to do, the state requires that we do all of that. Housing capacity analysis by December of twenty twenty three. That the the council needs to adopt that by December of twenty twenty three. So we'll bring all of this to you. Um, in a more formal way, starting in September. Um, and then after that, we will get into the the action plan, the housing production strategy. We have another year um under the state rules to to create that housing production strategy. So into twenty twenty four, we'll start looking at that action plan and and how we can do better to to promote this housing. So I'm gonna turn things over now to Sam Brookham, another economic planner on my team to to give you all a little more about. The the forecast and the buildable land inventory. Are you there, Sam?
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so as Tom said, I'm gonna uh talk a little about the the housing forecast, which again is sort of the demand or or needs. Side of the equation and then the BLI, which is really the supply, um, how much land do we have? We'll flip to the next slide. What I'm gonna focus on and what is gonna be the focus of of many of the slides that I'm presenting here. Uh, is actually the twenty fifteen growth scenarios report, which is part of the twenty thirty five comprehensive plan. Uh, the growth scenarios report outlined a uh a need um for a demand for a hundred and twenty three thousand additional housing units. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirty five. Uh, so once again, as as Tom mentioned, that's a third of the housing units that are expected. Um, at that point, um, two thirds remain, um, or at least exist today. And we don't actually um e- expect a a huge amount of change with the new HNA or BLI. Um, in terms of where those housing units really fall um specifically. Um, and so when I say that, what we're really talking about is is centers and corridors, we're talking about central city, complete neighborhoods, as we've talked about a little bit. And then um the house of types. So seventy five percent of the new development of those, those hundred and twenty three thousand additional housing units are actually expected to take place in centers and corridors. Uh, those centers and corridors are expected to be, you know, ready um now to accommodate that growth. The central city on a similar, on a similar note, is expected to accommodate thirty percent of that future growth. Um, that's, that's deemed to be the most cost effective, efficient way to provide the greatest level of service uh to the greatest number of Portlanders. And then for complete neighborhoods, uh, we're expecting seventy seven percent of those hundred and twenty three thousand. Uh, units to take place in complete neighborhoods. Um, Tom mentioned earlier that eighty percent goal um as part of the twenty thirty five comp plan. Um, just wanted to re- reiterate that here. Um, uh, because it's, it's close to that seventy seven percent here and and we're actually gonna be redoing or updating the analysis as part of this H and A. Um, and hopefully we'll get closer to that eighty percent. Uh, um. The, on the housing, sorry, uh, one last thing on that piece, um, the housing types eighty percent. Um, in multi dwelling buildings, that's really talking about those five plus unit buildings. Um, and the residential infill project, uh, project, uh, which. Allows for more middle of those middle housing types, particularly in si- single families or single dwelling zones could impact that. Um, but again, we're not expecting it to be a huge change overall. So of those hundred and twenty three thousand um additional households in that twenty five year period through twenty thirty five. Uh, that that equates to about five thousand units per year. And you can see here, we're, we're actually not doing too bad. We're, we're tracking pretty well with forecast and. You know, as a reminder, that that in, that time period included the Great Recession and more recently the pandemic. So. Um, and doing pretty well on in that regard. Um, but we are going to be updating um that. Planning year horizon to twenty forty five, so extending it another, another ten years. Um, and updating those numbers accordingly. So I'm gonna switch gears to the supply side, um, with buildable land inventory or the BLI. And I wanted to provide a a quick overview, um, for those who aren't familiar with it. The BLI is an assessment of the development capacity of the land within the city to accommodate forecasted housing and employment needs through the year twenty forty five. Development capacity is defined as the not likely number of new dwelling units that can be accommodated under the existing zoning. And and so with this BLI, uh, what we're doing is calculating an estimate. Of the development potential that's possible under current plans and zoning after we consider infrastructure and physical constraints. And arrange about the constraints. One of the things that's quite different about the BLI that we're underway with now. Um, versus the one that was conducted last in twenty sixteen. Is that the twenty sixteen BLI used a floor area ratio based capacity model that really just identified. Um, vacant and redevelopment capacity through. A function of underutilization of allowable FAR by zone. So, um, essentially looking at it from a zoning and development entitlement perspective. What we're doing here, um, and I'll get into the methodology in a, a couple of slides time. Is applying more of a, a market based development lens. That really identify is development feasibility and at what scales. Um, so we're getting a, a more market realistic and theory market mirror realistic depiction of development entity throughout the city. Um, based on arrangement. So going just quickly back to the growth scenarios analysis that's done again in twenty twenty fifteen. Um, that, uh, hundred and twenty three thousand additional housing units. Um. Uh, was, is is far surpassed by the the overall. Um, so basically there, Portland currently has, um, what was deemed to have more than enough development capacity to accommodate future residential growth. We don't actually, we don't expect that to change um with this, based on the preliminary BLI, BLI and forecast numbers that that we've been. Um, coming up with. Um, and again, the. S- the overall capacity there um that was conducted in twenty fifteen um had seventy percent in centers and corridors and only eleven percent in single dwelling zones. What the, what the excess capacity does is creates a pretty significant opportunity to, for us to make choices about. Where to focus or prioritize that residential growth. Um, and I I believe Morgan's going to talk a little bit about a number of projects that um. Have been done to help, well, and and will are continuing, um, that will help us maintain that capacity. Um, even as we have seen pretty significant development activity over the last decade. These two diagrams, um. Uh, the one on the right is a little easier to try to decipher in terms of overall density and capacity. But it really shows the distribution uh that's in the twenty thirty five comprehensive plan in terms of overall capacity. Uh, we have a, a significant concentration in central city. Uh, and the inner neighborhoods and then in major centers like St. John's and Gateway and along major corridors like uh Barbour Boulevard and Pidmont. And so this, uh, I I promised that I'd go back to the the redevelopment. Um, feasibility or the methodology around our new BLI and and this is what this slide is focusing on. Um, there are really five key steps uh to how we're undertaking this this BLI. The first is just simply cataloging all of our vacant. Land, um, regardless of kind of uh development potential, uh, that comes later. The second step is 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 the brand new um piece to this. And by redevelopment feasibility analysis, what I really mean is um a. Kind of taking a pro forma feasibility approach to determine development feasibility as a developer would look at it. Um, so what we, uh, BPS worked with Echo Northwest to. Uh, develop a pro forma analysis and a series of housing prototypes. There are fifteen housing prototypes ranging from. Single dwelling detached to uh missing, oh, sorry, middle housing like your townhomes duplexes, triplexes. And then apartments, um, a range of a different apartment, proper prototypes, uh, ranging from your sort of three story wood frame. Uh, walk up apartments to your more central city oriented tower. And this pro forma analysis is actually embedded in the BLI model. Um, what it does is calculates a residual land value. And a residual land value is this can can otherwise, was otherwise known as a a land budget. It's the amount of. Money that a developer can could conceivably spend on land for a development. Um, while still being able to hit all of the kind of target. Metrics that are um needed to make that development viable. Um, so. What the the BLI does is is look at any site throughout the city where land values for any given prototype. Um, where those land values are less than the residual and the world and the budget. Um, those sites are considered economically viable. And then we apply the unit capacity from the densest economically viable prototype. So a little complicated, but essentially we're, we're basically looking at, you know, what, what, what's, what's, um, what's feasible and and how many units can that? Um, theoretical development uh provide on any given site. Um, between those two steps, the vacant piece and the redevelopment piece, uh, we get this, you know, the gross development capacity. How much stuff can we get built in theory if nothing else exists on that site, other constraints exist, if no other buildings exist? Um, and then that takes us to step four, where we do look at those development constraints. Um, and. In adding in some of the recent development, uh. We uh are recognizing that. New development is unlikely to redevelop again in the next twenty, twenty five years, because it's much more high, high value. It's harder to make pencil. It's just, it's, it's probably not going anywhere. Um, and we get our net new housing uh development that's. Based on um zoning, uh, building heights, floor area ratios and you, and the likely utilization of those floor area. Or floor, floor area ratios based on market trends, unit sizes and a range of other inputs. So. Um, that's the, I I wanna stop there. Um, there's probably going to be questions, I I recognize about the uh the methodology here, but hopefully that gives a. Pretty, pretty, um, hopefully clearer overview of what we're doing. Um. And I'll pass it back to Tom, I believe the, we've got next steps coming up. Um, and we can pause there for questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the inventory. Um, did the vacant land include industrial parks, open spaces, sort of areas where we wouldn't. Target or anticipate development? And did it also include um older structure areas? I heard a mention of it excluded projects that are twenty years or younger. So I was wondering if it included areas such as um old town or some of our neighborhoods that have significant older building stock. That could be redeveloped into uh new housing capacity.
Uh, yeah, um, so what went into it, um. There are a couple of components there that you talked about. Um, we excluded parks and open space and and most publicly owned land like schools. Um, we would include land like stuff that's owned by the Port of Portland. Um, or the the Home Forward. Uh, we. Um, the BLI, we do, we do both sides, right? We, we look at the employment side and the housing side at the same time. And we're actually, and we'll bring to you. Uh, in a couple of meetings, the the employment side of things, because we're updating that analysis as well. Um, so we look at both sides, we, we, you know, the in. In particularly the industrial land, we don't allow housing on that. And so that's excluded from this analysis. But for the mixed use areas, we take a, a big chunk. I think it's about 60% of that building capacity we sort of typically is residential. So we'll put it in that residential supply. And some of it is used for parking. So that just goes into the ether and then 15% or so goes into the commercial employment side of the ledger to try and, you know, look at the capacity in that way spread between those two types. And was there another factor in there?
In terms of
The older buildings, yeah.
So I'm wondering about, you know, areas that might currently be utilized for car dealerships or something that someone could argue is underutilized, right? But technically isn't vacant. So how do those get considered into the inventory for future redevelopment potential?
Right, and that's what Sam was explaining that this feasibility analysis, like say for a townhouse, right? That, you know, a developer can afford to pay, say, $80 a square foot for a plot of land and still expect to make money in building it. And so we go out and we look using the assessor data. Where are there low value? Similar to the example that Commissioner Alexander brought up. Where are the small, single family homes of poorer quality? Low value in terms of the assessor data that a developer might buy and be able to turn a profit on a development? And when we find one of those properties, that goes in the bucket, the buildable land inventory. Stuff like car dealerships on 82nd Avenue, they don't have a lot of improvement value. They're just land. And so those get sucked up into the analysis as well. So it really is, if you look around and look at the older, lower value properties that may have a single story where you can do five stories. They may be a small building. Those are the types of things that get picked up in this buildable land inventory.
Okay, thank you. And then on the timing, I heard that there's, there is the new five-year requirement, right? From the state for the housing production strategy. Since we have our plan through 2035, will that be a 2035 to 2040? As our first five year or what will be the timeframe for that first five-year production?
No, we're bumping out the timeframe to 2045 to sort of catch up. And that's what we have our forecast for Metro on. And then the state, it's a six-year, it's a rolling six-year. From there, we'll just be bumping it out. Now, the forecasts, they like to do five-year increments. There's some crossover to some of the transportation planning that has to go on. So we get into these weird, is it 20 years, is it 25 years? And but, so we will be bumping out that planning horizon year. And then from going forward, we're going to keep it fresh to see how we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Thank you. I had a similar question about the feasibility analysis and some of the different prototypes and was wondering if there was any intersection or coordination with the discussions that are happening around downtown office buildings? With the recent council decision about SDC waivers and lesser seismic improvements, which admittedly there are still many, many hurdles left to convert those buildings into housing. But I'm just curious if this is an opportunity to make those explorations more real or if that's something that was looked at as part of this?
We haven't looked at that from our planning side of things. And as part of this analysis, we really haven't looked at that for a couple of reasons. One is we have a lot of capacity already in the central city to grow. Our zoning permits it, so there's no zoning barrier to those conversions. So that begins to get out of the realm of sort of BPS policy and more towards Prosper Portland and others to sort of make that. Where it will come up is probably as part of the housing production strategy and highlight that opportunity. But that conversion is really sort of more for other goals around activating the downtown and reinventing or reactivation or bringing people back downtown and to certain parts, right? You know, we have a lot of housing in the West End. We're starting to see housing in Lloyd's Center. So those are more strategic opportunities that are a little bit of a finer detail than what we get into through this analysis.
Okay, that makes sense. But it is true that these would presumably be major renovations and that there would be potential non-conforming situations where there would be zoning code requirements that would need to be fulfilled by that major renovation. And I'm just curious if that has been observed at all.
I can speak to that. Patricia Diefendorfer for the record. I think there's a couple of different things going on here. There's what Tom is expressing is that for purposes of the housing needs assessment, the zoning capacity, we have significant zoning capacity. And so there isn't necessarily the need to, you know, parse out what the building conversion, the office to housing conversion. That doesn't mean that it isn't going to be found as a strategy in the housing production strategy, right? And so to your point, there are building code perhaps constraints. There are less zoning code constraints to the conversion. There are some building code constraints that have been identified like the seismic. But Grant, as you noted, that's, you know, there's still hurdles. Sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought. I'm just trying to, oh, the non-conforming or the major remodel. So certain things are triggered, right? Certain code requirements to make improvements, to bring properties more to conformance or non-conforming requirements with major remodels. That is something that we are looking at. Circling back to conversation earlier about the development survey that was done and the identification of a number of different potential code amendments and how much they will or will not kind of, you know, play a role in facilitating housing production. And that has been something that we have kind of identified as a particular issue when it comes to the conversions. So we're exploring right now from that survey what things might truly be pursued as part of future code amendments. And that is definitely one we're looking at. And also the housing production strategy will probably, where the HNA may be a little silent on that, the housing production strategy will identify that as an action.
That's really helpful. Thank you. I don't know how we're doing on time. I have one more question, but I'm happy to go to others as well.
I think we're doing okay, yeah.
My other, well, and I don't know how much of a question this is. It's just kind of an observation that we're showing like the housing production targets and goals over time from, I don't know when it began, early 2000s, you know, out to 2035. And then we've got like the dotted line that's roughly tracking and it's like, we're doing pretty good. But it just, that tells such a different story from observation and what is actually happening on the ground. And we're in this housing crisis. So is it an affordability question? And that goes back to the discussion about more units alleviate affordability issues. And so probably very difficult question to answer succinctly, but if you want to take a pass.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's sort of exactly what we're sort of looking at like, wow, you know, we're meeting our forecast, but it isn't enough. And one of the, one of the new sort of factors that the state will be building into their forecast is this idea of underbuilding that, you know, even, you know, our past forecasts aren't that accurate and they're not accounting for that pent-up household demand that is out there. So if you think about, you know, what we're seeing is like, maybe you have a house and it's full of four roommates, right? But they would much prefer to be in their own individual one-bedroom or studio apartment. And so as soon as we build a little, where we had one household, we now have four households and they've sucked up all of that new housing. And so we're still in that tight market. We still have increasing rents. And so I think, and what we're going to get into, and I think, you know, even though we have lots of zoning capacity, we still need to do more. And that's what we're going to explore through the housing production strategy is we're not doing enough because clearly it's not playing out in the marketplace. And so how can we produce more, not just zone for more housing, but how can we produce more of that housing?
Vice Chair counsel?
Yeah, I just, just another inquiry about like kind of stabilizing cost and affordability. I mean, has there been any like investigation into like, you know, how to make, I don't know, I guess, the developers like, you know, pay into some type of affordability account to help with the state or with the city to build affordable housing? And also too, just to, you know, I don't think that the market is going to really, its goal is not to make necessarily things affordable. You know, everyone wants to make more money. So, so, you know, is there any tools or anything in place that could, you know, or if there's been any investigation of any tools that could be in place to like, not necessarily be competitive, but actually maybe, you know, help bring this mark, bring the price of housing down to like, you know, either it be like subsidized by the city or the state, you know, so that, you know, these properties could be competitive, you know, and help stabilize, you know, because it seems as though the more housing we build, the more people that come and developers just can charge more rent because of the demand. So
Yeah, I mean, I think it really does start with that demand and sort of absorbing that demand, right? So that if we build, you know, building new market rate housing is expensive. It's expensive to build the construction costs. And there'll be some studies coming out from the Housing Bureau later this summer around sort of comparing Portland to Seattle or Denver and how those construction costs are largely the same, right? You know, a two by four costs the same here as Seattle. And so, you know, building new housing is expensive. But we also, and we'll show you in the housing needs analysis, we're also growing a lot of high-income households in Portland. And so the more of that new housing, that new market rate housing that we build that can absorb those new households coming to Portland, it can relieve the pressure on the existing households. So that if, again, for people looking around and they can't find an apartment to rent in a long division, they're going to go two blocks over and rent that house and probably outprice a family, you know, four incomes versus one, two and a half incomes kind of thing. So there is some, there's some market at play there that we just need to build more housing, even if it's expensive housing. At the same time, we do have tools like inclusionary housing and the construction excise tax where we can extract a little benefit out of that market rate housing. Some of the other tools are, were constrained by state laws, right? The state law prohibits us from doing rent control. It constrains us on how much and what kind of projects are subjected to inclusionary housing. And so then we have to do other things like going out. You know, we've seen Portland, Portlanders come out heavy and support a city bond for affordable housing. And then a couple of years later, a metro regional bond for affordable housing that can begin to produce some of those units. We've also had a whole different side of policy initiatives through the Housing Bureau around tenant protections. And what landlords, you know, there's a state cap on rent increases. There's various sort of fair housing and eviction protections that begin to help stabilize. But we are, we are a West Coast city and we are facing all of these economic pressures of increasing costs and increasing, that are a result of increasing demand.
Thank you. We have one more portion in the training, correct? Okay, let's proceed to that. Thanks so much.
Just real quick, and then I'll turn things over to Morgan for our history here. Next steps, one more. So as we said, you know, the takeaways are, you know, on a very high level, we have plenty of, we expect to continue to have plenty of zone development capacity at that very high level. But, you know, as some of these questions tonight, we're going to, we need to dig into some of the details. And we know we have a challenge around family size units and affordable housing. We didn't really get into, but there's lots of data and around the need for accessible or visitable housing for for disabled people. We know we have an aging population that we need to plan for. And as we were just talking about, we need to look at, you know, what we're doing to stabilize cost burden households. And what else can we bring to the table to, you know, continue to address our most vulnerable Portlanders? And then, you know, as we said before, you know, we can be more strategic about our zoning tools and our infrastructure investments in increasing housing choices in these high opportunity complete neighborhoods that can really make a difference. Next one, please. So just again, you know, we're going to have a discussion draft for the HNA here in June. And we'll start to take some public comment on that. We'll consider that and we'll publish a proposed draft in August and bring that to you with public testimony in September for your deliberation and recommendation. And then that'll go to council for adoption. And then in 2024, we'll dig into the housing production strategy. Why don't we leave it there and?
We've got about 17 minutes left and I've got about 24 slides to cover. So
We can hit some highlights.
All right. Luckily, it's not data heavy.
You just
More pictures?
Pictures, good.
I think by way of introduction, what we wanted to cover here is just give you an idea of what's come before. We have been working on this housing issue. We have been looking at increasing densities and increasing bonuses for affordable housing projects, increasing our housing capacity. And so we just wanted to give an overview of what we've really been doing for the last seven, eight years.
Yeah, not sitting idle by any means. So just to kind of speed things along here a little bit. Morgan Tracy is senior planner with the Bureau on the code development team. This is just a bit of a retrospective of these past projects that we've been working on to advance our housing goals. So over the past seven years, the Bureau has undertaken a number of legislative projects to respond to the city's growing housing need from a variety of different angles. From early actions like inclusionary housing, which went into effect in February 2017, to the adoption of the comp plan, which establishes new goals for increased housing diversity, affordability and access, the things Tom was talking about. And to more recently completed projects like the residential infill project. These housing initiative projects collectively retooled each of our base zones where housing is allowed, created new provisions to protect lower income housing options and enabled more transitional housing to be created. Before we dive into these projects, I just wanted to give a little context to set the table a little bit. So when we're talking about housing, the term covers a broad spectrum of need from solutions to address our houses population, subsidized affordable housing to market rate housing. Zoning is an important tool to steer growth to areas that are well-served with infrastructure and near jobs and services, while also ensuring environmentally significant areas are protected and hazard areas are avoided. How that housing gets delivered requires other tools and actors. Shelters and transitional housing are funded by either government agencies or nonprofit organizations. Non-market housing in the middle can be a public-private partnership using incentives, fee waivers, inclusionary housing requirements and cost sharing. Market rate housing on the left is built by for-profit builders and developers. So we were talking a little bit about this in our previous discussion. So we were talking a little bit about this in our previous discussion. But when crafting our zoning rules, it's important to recognize these differences and needs and, and create the zoning tools to respond to that differently. We also talked a little bit about our centers and corridors growth strategy. So the 2035 comp plan considered several growth scenarios and opted for the centers and growth, centers and corridors strategy to optimize performance against a number of performance measures like carbon reduction, housing choice and efficient infrastructure investment. The result is that of the 123,000 or so additional households anticipated by 2035. About a third will be concentrated in the central city. Half will be in centers like Woodstock, West Portland, St. John's, and along connecting corridors like Sandy, Foster and Hawthorne, with the remaining 20% distributed across neighborhoods like Tabor, Hillsdale and Concordia. So this slide shows how that growth strategy translates into our zoning generally. And so centers and corridors are comprised of a mix of multi-dwelling zones, which are the blue patches on the map, and commercial mixed-use zones, which are red, with the neighborhoods largely comprised of those yellow areas, the single dwelling zoned yellow areas. To add a little more perspective to that, what the comp plan is saying is that 80% of the growth is projected for about 15% in the city's land area, while 20% is spread across 43% of the city's land area. So those are really, the centers and corridors areas are areas of really dynamic and expansive growth with less pronounced growth in the single dwelling zones. So we'll cover the projects starting from the central city and moving out to the centers and corridors, then to the neighborhoods, and then follow those by the projects that make refinements across all these areas. So the central city occurs, accounts for about 30% of housing growth in about 3% of the city's land area. Central City 2035 provided lots of additional capacity for high-density multifamily housing in the best-serve parts of the city. The project streamlined the FAR bonus transfer system, eliminated many options prior, and, I'm sorry, limiting many options in order to prioritize affordable housing. To increase capacity, increased floor area ratios and density and height in many areas of the central city. And to ensure efficient utilization of sparse land, minimum density requirements were also applied across central city. The project simplified zoning patterns in the, in the downtown by changing areas of residential zones to central commercial, which are shown in red on the map on the left, which allows for greater flexibility of residential and commercial mixed-use developments. The map on the right shows several key redevelopment opportunity sites that now include a master plan requirement to address circulation, pedestrian realm, open space layout, infrastructure capacity and building massing more comprehensively when those opportunity sites develop. Central City 2035 reduced the previous menu of floor area bonuses from 19 different options to four with the focus on providing affordable units. And the other three bonuses are only available in certain parts of the central city, like riverfront, industrial and south waterfront. The other major component of the central city plan was the unlimited transfer of FAR from sites within the central city to other sites. In addition, the project allowed for taller heights in some more difficult to develop areas along the waterfront or bridgeheads, or to support infrastructure investments like the transit mall or where existing FARs exceeded previously allowed height limits. The height bonuses are tied to FAR bonuses to again, further incent the affordable, the construction of more affordable housing. Our next project, commercial mixed-use zones, replaced our commercial base zones, which had not been intentionally designed for mixed commercial and residential uses. They were primarily focused on commercial-type development. New design features were added to improve the compatibility of development and its relationship with adjacent lower intensity zones. A new system of height and floor area bonuses was added that focus on affordable housing and commercial space, enticing more public plazas and the use of low-carbon, high-performance building materials. To further support the centers and corridors policies, the main street overlay zone was also created in order to further enhance and activate the pedestrian realm. So the images on the left show a comparison between the prior commercial zoning and the new mixed-use building form requirements. These rules were in response to what we saw was an evolution of larger and larger developments that tended to maximize the building envelopes and created blank wall gaps in the pedestrian realm. The new rules increase the amount of active uses on the ground floor and require more building modulation, step downs to residential zones, and also require more amenities for residents like communal areas or outdoor space. Moving into the multi-dwelling zones, better housing by design, retooled those zones by replacing dwelling unit density with floor area allowances to increase the diversity and type of housing around centers and corridors. So essentially where there was a, a density requirement of one unit per thousand square feet of site area for a particular zone, that is now just replaced with a maximum floor-to-area ratio and there's no unit cap. So the density is only capped by the amount of floor space that's created. This allows for more smaller and less expensive units. The project improved building and site design standards to improve compatibility and promote walkability. It added new options to create needed street connections in East Portland and incorporated ways to preserve more trees and green space and reduce heat island effects. These images show how the new zones are no longer based on how many units are allowed based on the site size, but instead how they're tied to floor area ratio maximums. From the smaller scale RM1 to large-scale RM4, each zone also offers bonus FAR in height for affordable housing or larger three-bedroom units or accessibility features. This image shows how the different multi-dwelling zones allow for a gradual transition between busy corridors and single dwelling neighborhoods. Another innovation with this project was the allowance for small commercial uses in these zones when located along major corridors. A number of provisions that were added to the mixed-use zones were also included for multi-dwelling developments such as building articulation and outdoor space for residents. We're screaming along. This is, this is great. Keeping up. The last base zone frontier, single dwelling zones. The residential infill project formulated a dual proposition. On the one hand, it established new building size limits that reduced the size of homes that could be built by a half to two-thirds their previous size. On the other hand, new types of middle housing were introduced so that a mix of unit types and sizes could be made available in more parts of the city, except about a tenth of the single dwelling lots that have environmental or land hazard constraints. The new floor area limits were added to both cap the size of new structures and reduce the incentive to demolish existing homes while creating more incentives to produce middle housing. New visitability standards were also created for sites with three or more units to provide greater accessibility for people with disabilities. And the second part of the residential infill project, or RIP2, as we call it, added cottage clusters and an expedited process to divide middle housing units so that they are each on their own piece of property through a middle housing land division. So this map shows the areas affected by RIP Part One, which is the areas in yellow, and RIP Part Two, and together that comprises about 150,000 lots. This slide is a good summary for the expansion of housing types allowed in single dwelling zones. The top row shows what was allowed before RIP. So basically a house, a house with an ATU or a corner lot duplex. After RIP, we had duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, more ATU options and an affordable option for sixplex. So more units allowed, larger FARs allowed to encourage that. RIP2 came and added attached houses, cottage clusters. The planning commission added a detached duplex option in the middle of deliberations. And we also created another form of affordable sixplexes in the, in the form of townhouses. So these more side-by-side unit construction to respond to feedback we'd received from our nonprofit builders. This image shows how the housing type diversity may be realized through incremental and scale-compatible infill on a typical single dwelling block. So here you can see basement ATUs and smaller homes and duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, cottage clusters, in addition to family-sized affordable plexes, coexisting happily with existing homes on the block. And now moving to projects that sort of address topic-specific but are more broad across areas of the city. The manufactured housing, manufactured dwelling park project addresses manufactured housing, which plays a small but important role in providing lower-cost, market-rate affordable housing. It's often the housing of last resort for households that are struggling to cope with rising housing costs. At the same time, it can be the first choice of housing for low-income households, especially families. So this project consolidated the existing manufactured dwelling parks into one new base zone and created consistent land use regulations that address the unique nature of manufactured dwelling parks in terms of density, access, setbacks and landscaping requirements. The map here shows the manufactured dwelling parks in yellow in relationship to the economic vulnerability analysis and illustrates one way we use the economic vulnerability analysis tools that Tom described. You can see there's close correlation between the manufactured dwelling park location and economic vulnerability, underscoring the need for added protections for those, those locations. The new MDP base zone provides 57 sites additional protection from redevelopment, representing about 3,000 units. Moving further into the housing continuum, the sheltered housing continuum project or projects were in response to identified challenges applying traditional zoning codes to non-traditional forms of housing. So Tom mentioned the policy in our, the one policy in our comp plan, which reflected sort of a different position or response from our zoning code to the houseless situation. So while the code previously allowed for temporary uses and group congregate living, rules for other types of housing and shelter were not so clear. In order to facilitate the siting of homeless shelters, remove barriers and provide more options for more types of shelter arrangements, this project clarified and expanded where and when transitional housing would be allowed. It accomplished this by making it easier to cite homeless shelters and associated services, creating a new community service called Outdoor Shelter, which is important because until the amendments were adopted, outdoor shelters required specific code exemptions from the city council one at a time. Now there's a path to permit these kinds of facilities based on emerging, emerging alternate shelter models around the city. The project also increased housing flexibility by allowing more types of group living configurations such as single-room occupancy or SRO units without a conditional use approval. And it also allowed occupancy of a recreational vehicle or tiny house on wheels on residential properties. We've heard a lot about inclusionary housing. This is one of our first projects out of the gate. So this requires that developments with more than 20 units in a single building provide some amount of those units as affordable housing. And there's two options that, that developers can use to meet this. So either 20% of the units within that project are affordable at 80% of the area median income, which is roughly $60,000 for a single person, or 10% of the units affordable at a 60% AMI, which is about $45,000 for a single person. And again, for comparison's sake, someone working a full-time job at a minimum wage in the Portland metro area earns about $30,000 a year. The policy prioritized onsite affordable unit creation over payment of fees in lieu or off-site units. Inclusionary housing projects are eligible for FAR bonuses and potential financial incentives such as fee waivers, tenure tax abatements and STC waivers. Since becoming effective in 2017, the IH program has produced about 500 units with another 500 under construction and another 500 units in the permitting process. The Housing Bureau is currently leading a calibration study to review the program. Recommendations from that study will be incorporated into the housing production strategy that Tom and his team are working, working on. And last but not least, the Historic and Conservation Districts protect the cultural and architectural legacy of Portland's significant places. The 2035 comp plan also recognized these areas as places that can accommodate growth through complementary development and adaptive reuse of historic resources. These two projects focused on rightsizing and streamlining the tools and processes to enable more housing production, reserving more involved discretionary reviews for projects that required greater flexibility or had more potential to adversely impact the built environment or adjacent resources. The map on the right just shows the location of local historic districts and the expanded areas of design overlays that, that accompanied the centers and corridors designations. And that is all I've got. Any, any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lang?
Yeah, it just, because of the time stuff, is it possible? Get the slide, because I, questions were coming up. And if I could look at the, the slides again and kind of jot those down and, would that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, all the, all the presentations are linked when I send out the meeting minutes, so you'll see them.
And.
Subsequent questions, we can, you know, if you just let us know, we can kind of bring that back in some fashion or other through one of the trainings. We'll figure out how to incorporate it.
You bet.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. We are at time, so we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.